The Chair calls the Stanley County Board of Education of November 5, 2019, meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here to our meeting tonight. And without further ado, we'll recognize Mr. Ryan McIntyre to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please bow. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, first and foremost, to give thanks. We thank you for another day with our families, another day to serve this great county, and another day to carry out our purpose of serving you. Also, Lord, we give you thanks for your son who died on the cross for our sins. Lord, lastly, we want to come to you asking for your guidance and your wisdom as we make decisions for our school system in your holy name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will recognize Dr. Jeff James for some recognitions.
I want to ask this time, Dr. Laura Beecham, join me at the podium to talk about the Educator of Excellence.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. This evening, I want to take a minute to announce the 69th Annual Recognition for Educator of Excellence, sponsored by the EC Division for DPA. And this year, I've got with me Ms. Julian Follin, who recommended our candidate for this year. So Stanley County Schools would like to honor Mrs. Lori Roach with a distinction of Educator of Excellence with the Exceptional Children's Division. Ms. Roach was nominated by Julian Follin, Principal of Richfield Elementary. Ms. Roach is a licensed speech-language pathologist that provides speech-therapy services to students with disabilities. She is recognized as a leader in service to Richfield by her peers and the families we serve. She works tirelessly to make connections to those she serves, as well as extend warm greetings to all children. She is an integral part of the overall operation of the school. She provides support to teachers, students, and families, and she is known to go out of her way to help students in need. Mrs. Roach is a dedicated educator who knows the value of explicit instruction to meet the needs of students, as well as the importance of parent communication and completion of paperwork to meet deadlines. She is often called upon by her peers to offer support in IEP meetings, as well as completing paperwork. Mrs. Roach is an advocate for students, as well as for the school. She is currently the Chair of the Fundraising Parent and Community Outreach Committee. This committee works towards fundraising needed items, projects throughout the school, as well as supports the PTO and their efforts. Mrs. Roach has a can-do attitude and is willing to step up. She often comes to the table with solutions and truly wants to be the best for the students, and by extension, of the school as a whole. Richfield Elementary is blessed to have Mrs. Roach on staff. It is with the utmost confidence that I can say, Mrs. Roach demonstrates a positive reflection on the Richfield Elementary and educational professional as a whole. These are just a few of the many reasons why Mrs. Roach has been awarded the recognition of Stanley County Schools EC Educator of Excellence for 2019.
So next, I'd like to ask Mike Lambert to come up and talk about our transportation audit. One of the metrics that we're held to, of course, is the maintenance on our buses and how well they are maintained or not. And the average for our district this past year has been around 38 points. And actually, our guys have been working towards getting their points down. They actually come in around 14 points this year, which was phenomenal. And actually, got a letter from the state congratulating us on that. So I do want to recognize the bus mechanics and the bus garage for the job they do. So, Mike, I'll let you speak two words.
Thank you, Dr. James, Chairman Poole, Board members. It's good to be here tonight and talk about the recognition we got from our state audit from DPA. Student safety is always the most important thing when we're transporting students from school to home-school and school to home every day. And one of the ways that we ensure that happens is by doing bus inspections. In fact, we have, our mechanics are state-certified to conduct 30-day bus inspections. You know, in the private sector, we inspect our vehicles one time a year. In the bus world, we inspect every 30 days. And these guys are educated and trained and take tests and take continued education on how to inspect these buses for us. We also train our drivers to do pre-trip and post-trip inspections and report back daily any issues they have with those buses. But once a year, DPA comes down and they camp out at our location and inspect our operations. And they spend two days with us, and they'll, at random, pull 10% of our fleet and go out and actually inspect those buses for condition. And also, that time, they take one of our mechanics, one of our certified inspectors, with them and make him perform a 30-day inspection and evaluate him at the same time. This year, Jeff Swerengen was one who was lucky to go out with the DPA consultant. And also, while they're on our site, they check our inventory, they go pull parts off the shelf and count them, then go into our cost clerk and make sure that we have that correct number on file on our staff. So it's more than just checking the buses, the whole operations of what we do every day. And to just give you a good example of the scoring process, and that's, Dr. James mentioned, we've received a 14.67 score this year. That's the best since 2005 for Stanley County Schools. An example would be if inspector finds an oil leak. And when I say an oil leak, I mean just signs of oil, not dripping. If it's dripping, they're going to park the bus. But that could be 10 points. A mirror not being adjusted could be five points. A seat cushion being torn could be another five points. And that's why it's so important for our drivers to check these buses every day, because a seat cushion could park a bus just as easy as a severe oil leak. Braces on the support, the hood support is five points. The scenario I just gave you, that bus would have scored a 35, and we scored a 14.67 overall. So, and the last thing the consultant does is he does a detailed report and sends back to our superintendent, Dr. James, on exactly what he found. And we're fortunate this year that it was, again, the best since 2005. And I think we want to recognize, I asked all the staff to come tonight, because it is a team commitment to make sure this happens. But we'll start with the mechanics, and I'll introduce Jeff Swerengen. Jeff is the, Jeff is the, he's the lucky one, because he got to go out with DPA. And Jeff is also the, we have the mechanics divided up into districts. He's the West Stanley High School District mechanic. Next, we'll go to the North Stanley mechanic, and that is Dustin Lee. And then we have the Alma High School District, that's Bart Gibson. And then the South Stanley High School District is Brett Frick. And also, I'd like to introduce the rest of staff, we've got them all here. We'll introduce Joyce Trace, she's our cost clerk, she's the one, to make sure that that inventory is all, all works out correctly. And then we have Beth Pulis, Beth is the TMS Coordinator, she's in charge of all the routing for the entire district. And then we have Chair Mas, she's the Office Minister of Assistant for Transportation. And then, the other mechanic here is our fuel man, about forgot your name, Bennett Tucker. Bennett has been with us for about a year, he fuels all the buses throughout the whole county. Then I wanted to also bring the four transportation coordinators that y'all have heard so much about. And we'll start with the North Stanley High School District, which is Bobby Massey. And the West Stanley High School District, Charlie Shepard. And South Stanley High School District, Pam Parker. And Alma High School District, Tamara Freeman. Good job, guys.
I know you're all going to check out right quick, but before you go, I'd like to say on behalf of the board that I know a lot of you can make more money than what you do doing things somewhere else, but we appreciate your dedication and you're a key link in getting our kids to the school system. Thank you. Next person on center stage, Mr. Danny Poplin. I don't think you thought you was going to get to do this this quick, did you?
I did ask if I could skip an alphabet, but they, Ms. Hope wouldn't go for that, so. Hope it saved me for three years now, in different variety of roles. Thank you. I'm Danny Poplin, I'm proud principal of North Stanley High School for the last, I think, 16 days, 17 days. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and just wanted to take the time to thank the staff and, of course, stakeholders, parents, and everyone for a warm welcome I received. It's good to be back with kids, very much enjoying it. I do have admin folks here tonight. I've got Ms. Downing, I've got Mr. Mills, Ms. Carter. We're all just going to take a little, two or three slides each about different topics throughout the school. Again, I've been there just a very short amount of time, so I thought we would just divvy it up for a little while. About 600 kids at North Stanley High School, about 35% free and reduced lunch. Got a little bit of data that we'll talk about, again, and of course, I think it is on your screen. Four-year graduation rate were up to 3.2% over from the year before, and a big kudos to the administration that was there last year making that a focus. ACT composite was up over five points to 51. Again, still like to see that higher, and we are working on that as we get through, as we get going for this year with some prep work. Math course rigor, it says .4, and we know that, if I'm not mistaken, 95% is the highest that you get on that, so it's not going to see it where it goes above, but we did reach the threshold of 95%. Did take some EVOs data, as you can see, math 1 scores 2017 was in the red, and you've heard Tim, Mr. Tim Hatley, so many times, talk about red is not where we want to be. We want a green, blue is where we want to be, we don't like to see the red. Math 1 2018 made it up into the green, and 2019, of course, made it to the, exceeds the blue. Math scores, of course, overall, you heard, I think we was here a couple months ago, Tim did a great presentation over the school data and basically the county district data. Math scores, again, was a new test, so if you just look at the bare numbers, it was kind of shocking, but if you look at far as the growth and moving is where we want to be. If you look down at biology, again, we made a very big push with the science, the last three years at Central Office, from 5th grade science, 8th grade science, and biology. And of course, we're proud to say there, when you see there's no reds over the three years or the three-year average data. And of course, we'd like to say that all the seven indicators are up here, but that's not the case. But again, we have some work to do, and of course, we're moving in that direction. We're getting settled, so to speak, but we, of course, looking at all of our areas and where to go. North Stanley High School, when you compare it to the district last year, we were above in math, about seven points over, four-year graduation rate, we were a couple percentage points over that. ACT, we were over, math rigor, and of course, ATC work keys, we were over about five percentage points for the district. North Stanley High School has met expected growth the last past two years, with, of course, two years ago being the biggest jump for North Stanley High School, the first year that it was a B. North Stanley High School did make a B again last year, so we're very proud of that, that we do have two Bs the last two years, and of course, look to continue with that trend of moving up. Going to turn this over now to, I think, is Ms. Downing, and I'm going to come back at the end, I have one quick slide to mention, so I'm just going to go back and get in line.
Hey, I'm Cam Downing, I'm the Assistant Principal at North Stanley, and we really have enjoyed having Mr. Poplin with us and are excited about his vision for what we're going to see happen going forward. So, one of the things that we're really excited about is that we are really pushing our students to reach for academic recognition outside of our school. And so, our Beta Club, Mr. Jared Spate has taken this on as sort of his own project. He's grown our membership in Beta Club by double what it was last year, which makes us now a school of distinction. It's based on your membership, and next year, we should be a school of merit as we continue to grow. And part of that Beta Club service that they have to do, they have to log community service hours, but it has to be verified by the Beta Club, so it can't just be, "I babysat my little brother," it has to be something really meaningful. And our kids have already done 300 hours with another 150 to be verified, so really excited about that work. And Ms. Heather Jones, one of our CTE teachers, has launched the National Technical Honor Society. We have a lot of students that love our CTE program, and this is going to allow them the recognition of their outstanding work in their classrooms, and we are registering members right now at this time. We also had the great opportunity to nominate some amazing kids for two very prestigious scholarships. Of course, the Moorhead Kane at Chapel Hill, Eli Williams, and Elith Hudson are representing us there, their essays were really amazing. And Mallory Russell and Elith will represent us for the Park Scholarship as well. And Kong Mao, if you've ever seen our band, he's our drum major, he's amazing. And the local DAR nominated him as the DAR Good Citizen, which actually now puts him in the position to go up into a regional level of this that has potential scholarship dollars behind it. So we're very proud of Kong being recognized in that way. And I did want to just give a little glimpse into the classroom. One of the senior traditions that our kids really love is Ms. Huffman's English class. And when she teaches Canterbury Tales, which we all know can be quite challenging, she really helps them embrace what it's like to have lived in that time period. So they do the trip to the Renaissance Festival, but then she takes it a step further, and when they come back, they do a true medieval feast, where they dress up as the levels of society within a medieval, I guess it would be a fiefdom or a kingdom, and they fix foods of that time. And she said, you know, she's pretty tough about it, too. One little girl wanted to be a baron, and she's like, "You can't be a baron, because they, women weren't barons. You could be a baroness, but you can't be a baron." So she really makes them stick to what was real in history, and they love it. They have a great time with that day. We couldn't talk about our kids and what they do outside of the classroom without giving kudos to our band and Mr. Pulis. He is tireless and such a dedicated leader of this group of children, and he puts them in competitions to really stretch themselves. And this year so far, our drum major Kong has been given a rating of superior at one of the competitions, as well as our band getting superior in music and excellent in marching. And what you need to know about what's really special about that is that we're a 1A school, but our band competes with 3A schools, schools that have 1,500, 2,000 kids. And that's because band competitions are based on how big your band is, like how many members. So here we are, this little 1A school with a band as big as some 3A schools. So our band goes, they compete, and they represent, and they do a great job. And we're going to be in Christmas parades, and we'll have a Christmas concert when those dates come out. I hope y'all take a chance to come see the magic that Mr. Pulis weaves with those kids. And of course, FFA, you can't say North Stanley without mentioning FFA. We had so much to put on this slide, that I'm certainly not going to go point by point, but Ms. Rushing and Mr. Elliott have such a passion for this, and they get our kids so excited. And I think the last bullet just speaks volumes for what they do with our kids in this, that one in six students at North Stanley are a part of FFA. And we're very proud of that and the things that they're doing to keep agriculture and farming a big part of what is important in their lives. And then the last thing I'm going to share with you is that because we are bringing the International Baccalaureate Program to the school, we wanted to make sure that we were giving our students the opportunity to do some travels outside of Stanley County. So we created a trip for each grade level. And this year, the freshmen are going to be going to Biltmore at Christmas. Now, it's not just Christmas at Biltmore, Mr. John Williams has very, has a deep wealth of knowledge about the art that's part of the Biltmore, as well as the architecture. So they actually do a behind-the-scenes with Mr. Williams as they tour the Biltmore, and that's really special. Our sophomores already went to Washington DC, actually, Ms. Carter was one of the chaperones there. And while they were there, Mr. Spate made sure that we are going to be part of the Laying of the wreaths at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier when we go next year. So we will actually have students that will do the Laying of the wreaths while they're in Washington DC, so we're really excited. Juniors went to the State Fair, but they rode a train, so that was a little different experience for some of them. And then our seniors are going to go to New York City. They went last year, it was a big hit, they're going to go again, they see a Broadway play, they do a lot of sightseeing and really get to get the feel of a big city. So really proud of some of the new things that we've got kids doing to get, stretch them a little bit. And so now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brian Mills and let him talk about our athletics.
Thank you, Ms. Downing. The fall sports have represented the school and the community quite well since August. Starting with volleyball, volleyball, we're the tournament champions, and they made it to the second round of the state playoffs. They took two road trips up to the mountains, victorious in the first one and lost in the second round. The cross-country team, the ladies were conference champions this season. The athletes leading the cross-country team were Colby Poole, Alexis Good, and Nicholas McClure, and they will be running in the state meet in Kernersville this coming Saturday. Women's tennis, tennis, they did quite well this season as well. Andy Billensley and Elith Hudson were doubles champions in the conference. Courtney Smith finished fifth, and the doubles made it to the second round of the regional. And Courtney, she made it in the first round. Our varsity football team is currently in second place in the conference. They conclude the regular season this Friday at South Stanley. Currently, if everything goes as projected, hopefully, we'll have a first-round playoff game on the 15th at North Stanley. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Carter, I'm the IB Coordinator at North Stanley, I'm over the IB Career Related Program and the Diploma Program. So I just have a few highlights to hit for y'all from that. Some of this information's available on our website, and there's definitely more to come in. So this just is talking a little bit about the International Baccalaureate. It is a globally recognized program that has been part of the global education system for over 50 years. It offers a very rigorous, high-quality education in which students are encouraged to excel not only in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom. They have very in-depth coursework, and they really focus on giving back to the community. The Career Related Program and the Diploma Program are also, are both going to have components to which we will have community service and trying to make the world a better place within that, so we're really excited about those things. There are four different programs that the IB offers, and to begin with, North Stanley will be offering the two that are available for the upper-level high schools, so we will have those two. Right now, our Career Related Program is set to focus on the health sciences, just as a means of our application authorization, but then, once we get that authorization, we can add any number of career paths for our students to be a part of. We are slated to begin next year in the fall. In order to prepare for this, we are having to upgrade and train and do a couple of things. Our science labs are going to start construction and updating and modernization of those. Here soon, we will have a workable shower, an improved fume hood for which students can do different experiments in, and gas lines, to where they can perform those safely. At this time, we can't do any of those things. Well, we have a shower, but it kind of drains, and we need it better. Teachers are also required to complete IB-approved training, and so we are on a good timeline in order to get those completed by February. We sent several teachers over the summer, we sent several, a couple other in October, and then we're going to have some online training done in November, and then we'll send a couple more teachers in February and do some more online training in February. So by that point, we'll have everything done. All of the information are different policies, different proposals and things like that, are in the process of being updated and put on the website, so you can see all of those through the North Stanley webpage. Part of this also is that not only to train the teachers who are going to be IB teachers, but also to train the teachers that are going to be at North Stanley in preparing the students who enter the program, but also just teaching, just a skill set and things to kind of keep in your toolbox, to help us to use the best practices in order to have the best educators that we can. So we will continue in-house training and professional development that'll teach about the approaches to knowledge, the approaches to learning and teaching, and how we can incorporate that into our everyday classroom with some of those IB expectations. So that's part and worked into our set goals that we're really excited about. As of November 1st, our application was submitted for both the CP and the DP, and we are scheduled, we're in the process of scheduling a verification visit, and that's when members of the IB will actually come to North Stanley, and they'll sit down and we'll talk to several, several different groups of people. And based off of that, our authorization will be approved, will be approved. And then we can begin teaching classes in the fall. Right now, we have approximately 20 students who have turned in applications. We are going to start the process of speaking to those students, speaking to other students who would be good candidates for this program, and just seeing what we can do to best help them reach their goals, which is, you know, what we all want to do, is make sure that you're in the right place where you need to be. We're also, in February, we're going to start doing some more middle school presentations like we did last year, going to the different middle schools, and just letting them know what these options are, and also having parent information nights, trying to get through the holidays and the craziness and the chaos, and settle down with some parents and say, "This is what we have available to you." And that's where I turn it over to you.
One last, last slide. North Stanley last year administration, and I applaud them, had the first Veterans Breakfast and invited several veterans, of course, who they could come. It was a great day, I know that Mr. Poole was there, and I think he would say the same thing. It was a very, it was a very good ceremony to recognize veterans and what they do, not just for what they've done for the country, but at least to come by and let the kids and the rest of us say, "Thank you." The Second Annual Veterans Breakfast will be this Friday at 9:00. We invite veterans, I did make some personal calls to folks that I've known that are, have served in the forces, but of course, it is open to all board members, we'd love to have you there to help show thanks to our veterans. But if anyone that you know of veterans, it's not the North, nor them the county veterans, it's just veterans from the county, if they think they would like to come, just please have them call the front office and let us know. Our students or foods class, Ms. Lee, are going to prepare the food, they just kind of need a number so they know. They just kind of need a number so they know. Would like to extend that to whoever sees this on whatever social media outlet that there is. Please call our front office, let us know by tomorrow afternoon if, if possible. Any questions?
One thing's been bugging me the whole time. When they do this medieval feast, do they wipe their hands on the bread for the napkins?
I have to turn that over.
I'm pretty sure.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
We have minutes from the October 3rd and October, regular meeting and October 29th, special call meeting. I have a typo on my name there. I don't know if you call that or not. At least you didn't change the first letter. It was the last letter. Got an S instead of an E there, so you just hit the key beside it. No big deal. Any other changes? Anyone have? Following the public comments and the board member comments. Mr. McIntyre just called my attention. You should have copies of the April, I'm sorry, not April, October 14th, special call meeting also in the, in the group. Any changes on any of those? If not, they will stand approved as presented with the one minor change. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mike Wyke. Is that close?
Yeah, Wyke.
Wyke, okay. For our 2018, 2019 audit report.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Poole, members of the board, Dr. James, pleased to be here this afternoon to present the results of the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2019 to everyone. Last week, I was present at the finance committee meeting and we went over the statements pretty thoroughly at that point. So tonight, I'm really not going to go over them in very much detail at all, to be honest. It's a 75-page document. We'd probably be here very late in the evening if I did that. But I wanted to let you know, if you do have any questions, each of you have the financial statements, let me know if you have any questions during the presentation. But the main thing is, there's four opinions that we actually issue on the financial statements. One is on the actual numbers, the balance sheets, the income statements. One is on the overall compliance of the district with just valid, solid internal controls. One is on internal controls and compliance as it relates to monies that the district receives from the state of North Carolina. And another report relating those internal controls, internal controls and compliance relating to federal monies that the district receives. On all four of those opinions, they were unmodified reports. That's commonly referred to as a clean audit report from us. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements as your independent CPAs. Whenever, and one thing I just want to point out, when we say unmodified, what we're really saying is nothing came to our attention that would cause us to modify the opinion, where we said everything was in accordance with the accounting standards except for this modification. So there were no modifications that we found during the result of our testing. To point out, just on the results of operations, your instructional funds essentially broke even this year, so didn't really add anything to fund balance, didn't take anything away in total this year. So steady on that. In my opinion, you probably could try to start adding some to fund balance would be the, the goal I would suggest to everyone. But the main thing is, is that at least you didn't go backwards this year. You know, we held constant on that. The school food service program, they made cash this year. And our firm, essentially, all we do is audit school boards. And we see so many child nutrition programs who are losing cash during the years. So I think that's something that the districts should be very proud of, that they're gaining cash. And we talked about it at the finance committee meeting. Hopefully, in the future, Stanley County Schools will be able to start charging indirect cost to the school food service program to help maybe add some fund balance into the general fund and whatnot. But it's definitely going in the right direction on that. One thing I did give to y'all, and I want to spend a little bit of time on, I think each of you probably have this schedule. It's a four-year running schedule. And I go over this with all of our school boards. And just this one piece of paper can sort of summarize the challenges that school boards are facing right now in the state of North Carolina. Does everybody have a copy of this in front of you? What this schedule really has, it summarizes the contributions that Stanley County Schools has made to the North Carolina retirement system. And it breaks this out into the two main components of the contribution. One is for the pension contribution and one is for the contribution for post-employment healthcare benefits. Say if someone retires at 55, the, the full insurance they get covered from 55 to 65 and then the supplement they get once they get on social security. The point of this is, if you look down on 2016, the total of these post-employment benefits that Stanley County Schools paid was 6.15 million. If you go up here to 2019, last year, the district paid 8.2 million. So over $2 million more dollars was paid in for future benefits to the employees. But you say, well, maybe you added employees. That's why this cost went up so much. If you look over on the next column in that same period, the district lost 75 covered employees, 75 full-time benefit-earning employees in that same period. The point of all this is, this is what we're seeing in almost all the districts throughout the state. And that's what really puts the challenge on the districts, is the amount of overhead that's being mandated that you contribute by the state of North Carolina, along with any additional wages, any raises that are mandated by the state. Truly, I think that, you know, the employees probably deserve raises. There were so many years that you didn't get a raise as a school district. But the point is, when North Carolina mandates the raises, the federal government may not increase your funding. The federal government doesn't really care what North Carolina says you're going to have to pay. The federal government doesn't care what the retirement contribution rates are. If you have locally paid people, if the local government doesn't kick in on the county monies and pay more money, where does that come from? It comes out of your fund balance or you cut headcount. And that's what we saw there on the, the lack of the covered, the lowering of the covered employees. And again, just want to take a little bit of time to go over that because really, one piece of paper just sort of telltale sign to me of what all school boards are facing in North Carolina. Does that make sense to everyone? Any questions on that?
I think we have been well aware of that dilemma for a lot of years, when they say we've, we're increasing your funding, but the cost of everything has exceeded the funding. So we're still behind the eight ball.
You still go backwards, don't you? If they increase the cost by 5% to pay for four of it, you lost a percent. But I'm, just wanted to bring that out, point that out to you. One other thing to point out, last year, for the year ending 6/30/18, Stanley County Schools submitted a comprehensive annual financial report. It's a higher level of financial reporting than what these actual, the financial statements are here to the awarding agencies, GFOA and ASWO International. And I'm pretty sure that was the first time that, that Stanley County Schools has presented those in its history. And wanted to let the board know that the, the district received certificates of excellence in financial reporting for both of those cavers. So I think that's something that the finance department and the board in general should be proud of, those, that recognition. But in conclusion, from our standpoint on, on the audit, I wanted to thank everyone for the cooperation we received during the audit. We look at the schools, the different departments. We asked for lots of different information and it seems like we get full access to the information and we get timely access to that information. And that's very important to us as the, the independent CPAs. If you have any questions for me now, you know, feel free to let me know. Or at a later date, you know, feel free to just get on the phone and, and let me know at that point.
I just saw an item, when I picked this thing up and started looking at it the other day on page four. We've had a certain individual in the county running around like Chicken Little, the sky's falling in, how we're losing his kids. And I just saw here where it said the enrollment in 20 fiscal year, 2018, actually increased going into 2019 by 123 students. That was, that was a plus too, because we've been sort of like this for a good while.
Yeah, I mean, and really, I would still say Stanley County is a rural district. Hopefully, y'all would say that. And that's sort of the bread and butter of what we audit. I think we do 58 districts throughout the state. Really, the vast majority of these districts, I'm having to talk to them about when do we really start considering closing schools because of that decline in enrollment. So it's, it's very good to see an improvement in that.
Any board members have any questions?
Sure. Given the current situation with the state legislative budget, do you see that having an impact on us as far as continuing budget resolutions, things that we're going to have to do and up until and if we get a budget from the state?
Yeah, I mean, I think your hands are just, are tied right now. And we talked about that a little bit in the, the finance committee meeting. To me, the real risk that you face, and we talked about that in comparison to fund balance levels, the state's given you like planning allotments and whatnot, you have those, but still, that, that's their best estimate. What happens if it comes out and it's a little bit lower and you just lose four teachers? With benefits, you're talking about over $200,000. And where does that come from?
I don't know.
Yep. That, that, that's the real risk there.
One other question. Do you see with what's going on with the state legislature as well, any recommendations that they're going to make in the way budgets are performed or the way budgets are audited or anything that that may?
Just on the, the true budgetary aspect? Really hadn't heard anything on, on that, to be honest, just on, on the budgetary basis. And, and I do know, three or four years ago, this was back whenever McFory was the governor and we were at a conference in Raleigh. And I think this sort of tying in a little bit to what you're asking, while I'm rambling on a little bit. We were at a conference there and North Carolina truly, at, at the state level, North Carolina funds schools very highly, a very high percent compared to other surrounding states. The thing is, the surrounding states fund locally much higher. If you go to some of the other states, your property tax bills have a separate line for school funding. And I do know, at that point, three or four years ago, the state, they were saying, you know, definitely, we want to shift that burden more to the local governments to get more in line with surrounding states. The thing is, I've talked to attorneys and whatnot about this, so maybe getting a little bit beyond me on that. But North Carolina's constitution, I think, is written a little bit differently where it is the burden of the state to fund education. And they say that's different than what a lot of the surrounding states are. But I can assure you, that was, that was direct from, the, the communication I conveyed to you was, was presented at a conference. So that was the intent at that point in time. Yep.
Any other questions? If not, we thank you kindly for coming in and going through this ordeal.
All right. Thank you all. Y'all have a good evening.
We're going to our committee reports, instructional, Mr. Jeff Chance.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had a facilities committee meeting on October 9th, 2019, at which time we presented the Millenport Road development for the car rider line. Projected costs were $60,000 and it was approved in committee and was later approved at a special call meeting, which was held on October 14th.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any questions on that, I'll move on to the Richfield Road development. Todd Bowers had presented to the committee several different, well, option one and option two. Did you have two or three options with you that night? Or different?
I'm sorry.
The day that you presented to the facilities committee. Didn't you have, was it three maps of how the road could be?
Well, the, the DOT had, had come out several years ago and, I don't know, there's about nine options on there, but the road, additional road was about three, ways you could do a different road were about three options. They had, they had made a lot of different recommendations and, you know, and determined where they thought it was feasible or not.
Right. I know one of them was going through the industrial park, utilizing that road and then making a new road out of that. But we just didn't see that as feasible, just given the fact that there's tractor-trailers utilizing that road to load up and things such as that. So we didn't have to vote on this because it's already on the DOT schedule. So it, right now, is scheduled to be completed.
Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Add to what Mr. McIntyre said, this is paid for by the state, correct?
Yes.
This is out of their budget. So the cost to the local district, no funds whatsoever.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Since I've got a good-looking diagram in hand, I'd like to ask a question. I'm assuming I'm reading this right. You've got two-way traffic and then you've got a one-way lane. So you can have traffic coming in from either end, right? And then feeding on that loop or?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman.
You've got, you've got a one-way stretch right here. I'm assuming that's traffic, if this is two-lane, this is traffic coming in here.
It will double stack, yeah, it'll come through. Traffic will come in here, it'll be double stacked around.
That way, okay.
And then it'll go out the other way.
Go out the other way.
Go out that way. Back out on Main Street.
All right. So you've got, and if they come around this way, they can come back out this way, right?
Well, that would, that would complete some of the purpose.
That's what I, I guess, when it says two-way traffic, that's sort of, should be.
Well, initially, initially, what it, what it was was we would be traveling in this way, looping around and coming back.
Right, I got you.
But then what we ended up with DOT, if you'll see a little sort of a light dotted line like through here in front of the ball field, since they agreed to let us go out this way, we, we're now going to cut this road in front of the ball field on that dotted line and it'll be double stack traffic. We will double stack that way and go out. Initial thing with DOT was to turn around and come back. But then they, they looked at it, presented some options for funding and said we could come, if we could double stack, we could come that way. So that's, that's the way we will be going now. The road won't lose the ball field. Yes. And we'll have fencing, other fencing will come down along here. The fencing office will be at our car. DOT will pay for, you know, funding the road. But, you know, we're going to put fencing right down through this area here for the playground and all of this. So there'll be no concern of traffic parked around here.
How close to that road do you have, like, there's about, is that close, right?
It, it gets pretty close. Again, you have to keep in mind, these, this is done off GIS and so these boundary markers are not exact. When they get ready to do the road, obviously, we'll take it just as far as we can to the edge properly. But if, you know, we plan to put fence along there and then if we have to, if there's any more concern, we could put something, we're going to put speed bumps in the road. I plan to put speed bumps there in the road so traffic won't be going, can't go very fast, you know, right through there. We'll have about two or three speed bumps in that area to slow traffic down. And then the fencing there, just to protect, you know, as kids, they're lining up cars, you know, cars line up an hour and 15 minutes. Yeah. And so that way, we won't fence there so we don't have to worry about, you know, a child getting in a car.
Excuse me?
Yes, in the back. It's where the kids will pick up and, that's where they'll pick their students up in the back. They're same, it's the same pickup, it just go, you know, it'll just be coming in from a different way. And then they'll go out, get on Main Street and go down and hit the stop lot. So the traffic won't, won't back up on Main Street. And according to DOT, we have enough queue, you know, they're the ones that tell us how much space we need. And that's where she said if we double stack those cars and go out the other way, we can go in front of the ball field and we'll still have enough, enough queuing to accommodate all the cars that we need to. We didn't want to lose the ball field if we didn't have to.
Do you want to ask for a start?
That is really, I mean, not to, to.
They're waiting on, they're waiting on their budget to pass through.
Well, I mean, you know, it's really in DOT's hands and they know we want it quickly. And, you know, but again, we're sort of at their, their mercy as, as to when they'll get started on the project.
Just as long as they don't do like they did at Locust, come back and want us to ship in a bunch of them.
Yeah. You know, word we got was that they would be fully funded. That's the word we're going on right now, that they said it would be fully funded. Because all along, you know, we didn't, we were back and forth, wanting if we were going to put in some monies and how much it was going to be. And we did not, you know, we said, we couldn't commit anything without school board approval. And they never told us anything to commit to and basically said that, you know, they would fund the road and so that's where it was left at.
Okay. Thank you. It's already been approved. We, we, but I appreciate you.
Yeah, it's on, it is on state DOT plan that they have submitted it and it's, it's on their docket to be done.
I mean, it's already been approved by the board here.
As far as I know, yeah, I can't.
And we'd have to, that's right. Yeah. We're accepting what they're putting out.
Right, because we're not, we're not spending any, you know, we're not asking for any funds to do anything. It's, you know, it's no funding on our part. It's just.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I hope nothing changes.
Will this require us to tweak anything, current pickup during the construction of this process?
Not during the construction, no. Because right now, they're coming in that loop and just going right back out. So it shouldn't cause us any disruption. just going right back out, so it shouldn't cause us any disruption while they do this, if it's done during, you know, school year. But I'll keep you informed as I hear, but you know, right now, when you talk to DOT, I think the funding issue has just killed them right now, too, so, as far as the budgeting. But if I will, if I find out something, I'll definitely, you know, I'll keep you all informed as far as what we're looking at date was.
Mr. Bowers, do we have an estimated cost on the fencing that's gonna go around the playground area?
No, I can probably tell you what, having done enough fencing, that we're probably looking at around somewhere between $10,000, $15,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. Maybe not quite that much, it depends on where we start and where we go, but I would say we're probably looking at around somewhere in that neighborhood.
You're welcome.
All right, next is Finance, Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. Just a couple of notes. In our Finance Committee meeting, we met with the audit firm and received a fairly comprehensive review of the documentation that you have in front of you, that we got our brief on earlier this evening. A couple of notes, one was the fund balance. The superintendent and his administration were able to, I think, double our fund balance over what it had been the previous year, which is good, but as you'll recall, the individual from the audit firm tonight noted that one of the recommendations was to increase our fund balance. One of the reasons for that advice was based on the fact that if we do have an unfunded mandate from the state or federal government, that has to be funded. So if we don't have the fund balance to cover those items, or that item, and we can't get an emergency funding measure passed by the county commissioners, that means that something's gonna happen, and that something is probably gonna have to be a reduction in staffing, because that's the only place that we can make any appreciable savings, especially on short order. So, and that would not be, obviously, certified staff, but it would be some of our hourly staff, and of course, the hourly staff are just as important to the efficient operation of the school system as everyone else, so it would put us in a tough spot, and I understand that the superintendent is working on trying to create a larger fund balance for us. One of the things that we discussed is it's always, it's always a challenge, because on one hand, if you increase your fund balance, you're accused of hoarding money, and people may be inclined to want to cut your budget. On the other hand, if you don't have the money, then you're completely beholden to whoever holds the purse strings, and in this case, it's either the federal, state government, or the local government. So I just wanted to point that out, that we've, that we've, we, the school system, the administration, has increased the fund balance, which is great news. The recommendation was that we should increase it some more, and I don't think anybody would disagree with that. The last thing I did was, I asked the auditor if he would go back and look, because as he stated, they audit quite a few different counties, LEAs, and I asked him if he could go and just take a look at what some of the comparable counties to us, what they had in their fund balance, and we don't have that information tonight, but I think we'll get that in the next, I know they provided it to us, we just weren't prepared to share it tonight, but we'll share that in the next Finance Committee meeting, if not, in the next full, regular meeting. I think it'll be interesting to take a look at that. And that is pretty much it for me, unless anyone has any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. First, now, Ms. Vicky Watson.
No report.
Policy, Ms. Crump.
Yes, Chairman Poole, we met on October the 14th, and we have taken on a very daunting task of updating our policies, and we have made it to the 4,000s, so you will see a very thick packet, and over the next 30 days, as long as these approved to be tabled, if you could just review them at your leisure, they'll sit there, and then the next meeting, hopefully, we can approve them. I'm gonna go through, just for transparency, I'm gonna read the number, and then the title of the policy, for everyone here that doesn't have a copy. Policy 4,000, focus on students. Policy 4,001, equal education opportunities. 4,023, education for pregnant and parenting students. 4,050, children of military families. 4,100, age requirements for initial entry. 4,110, immunization and health requirements for school admission. 4,115, behavior standards for transfer students. 4,120, domicile or residence requirements. 4,130, discretionary admission. 4,152, unsafe school choice transfer. 4,155, assignment to classes. 4,202, 5,029, 7272, which means they'll just be referenced in all of those different policies, service animals in schools. 3,226 and 4,205, internet safety. 4,210, release of students from school. 4,220, student insurance programs. 4,230, communicable diseases for students. 4,240 and 7,312, child abuse, reports and investigations. 4,250, 5075 and 7,316, North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program. 4,260, student sex offenders. 4,270 and 6,145, concussion and head injury. And I would just add that most of these policies are policies that we currently have. We just updated the language a little bit, according to the recommended policies for the North Carolina School Board Association. A couple of them are brand-new policies for us, so...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crump. Those will be out for voting next to meeting. Ms. Gibson, do you have anything, or Dr. James? Let's lady resource network.
I guess we're still just waiting on a budget to be passed, and for adults to start acting like adults in the General Assembly, instead of bullies.
Well, I'll second that, but the, I did talk to our lobbyist Monday, she actually sent an email out. She met with a team with the governor's office at 2:00 Monday afternoon, to discuss the current predicament with our budget, and of course, the governor has an option, either to veto what was presented by the Senate, to accept what was presented by the Senate, or wait 10 days and it becomes law automatically. So, a lot of discussion, I would encourage, I'm not sure, I haven't talked to NCAE, but my conversation with our lobbyist was, our teachers need a raise, and I think we're at the point, something's better than nothing. And I will say that Tim Moore, the House Speaker, actually, might have been this weekend or Monday afternoon, but Tim actually went through the numbers, and I think what most people don't realize, and I didn't, a state budget as large as ours, a 2% increase is millions of dollars. So when you looked at the budget that was presented to the governor, the Senate and House did go back and added an additional 300-plus million dollars to the budget, so it's, it has been improved over its original, coming out of the Senate. So my hopes are, the governor will decide to pass the budget, so we can move forward. If not, the next time they meet again will be in January, and at that time, it's very doubtful that there'll be any increases made in January, and if they are, they won't be retroactive. So I think our teachers and other employees would say, it's better to have something than nothing. So I'm hoping the governor will either let it lay on his desk 10 days and go until all that way, or at least approve the budget, but that's sort of where we're at, and as you heard, Mr. White, tonight, there's a lot of things we're having to pull out of local budget, that we've got to move forward on our budget, we've got a continuing resolution tonight when Georgia gets up, but at some point, it's going to start affecting people that are in our buildings, if we don't get a budget. So we need to make a decision to move forward. So that's all I have. I did talk to Jack Coke, he is the superintendent's organization president, and he was actually with the governor Monday, called me this morning, but again, I, my hopes are, I don't go home and hear that the governor's vetoed it, because I think that's a lose-lose for everyone, so let's just keep it in our prayers, and let's do the right thing, hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is curriculum and instruction, and it's back to you, Dr. James.
Okay, we had a special call meeting on October 29th. The board was given, now it's called NC STAR, it used to be School Improvement Plans, we could print it out and hand it to you, and I believe Hope done that for you in a booklet. The whole process for school improvement has changed, so all we need tonight is to take a formal vote to approve those plans. What we had at our special call meeting was the schools that did not meet growth, or were not A-C or higher, present to the board, and I think the board would, the board members that were there would say it was, I was very impressed with some of the presentations that were made that night. We have a lot of work to do, and of course, principal evaluations have been going on for about two weeks, so that's always a trying time, and crucial conversations to have with principals, and our direction as a school system, as far as academics. So tonight, it just needs a formal vote to approve the NC STAR plan, so we can move forward in that process.
Chairman, plane a motion. For 2019, 2020. Okay. The motion by Ms. Crump is to approve school improvement plans for the 2019, 2020 school year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. McIntyre. Is any discussion or questions? Here none, those in favor signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion passes. Early graduation list?
The list is in your packet, we have quite a few early graduates. The great thing about that is, we pull ADM out before they graduate, so we get our money, and so we're glad to have these young people at least go on. Since the counter is not aligned with the community college or four-year university, early graduates, it also still puts a quagmire with those individuals when they graduate to try to get into those universities, because we're off by about two weeks, so we'll continue to monitor that as a school system, but quite a few early graduates this time, I'm proud of them for taking on the extra work. Some of these graduates have completed their courses of study in three and a half years. So again, it just needs approval by the board and acceptance and a vote on it.
Move approval of the early graduates for the year 2019, 2020.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve the list for early graduates for 2019, 2020. Do we have a second? Have a second, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, approve the early graduation for 2019, 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion is approved. Ms. Calvert. And please note, we had some red items, I think, that were added since the original list went out.
Yes, sir. So the updated copy was at your place this evening. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Move approval of Section 2.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve Section 2. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Graves. All those in favor of approval of Section 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chairman Poole, board, I'm gonna bring up the topic of funding and budget again. I'm here to request a continuing budget resolution for the purpose of paying salaries and usual ordinary expenses until December 3rd, or sooner, and this action is required due to our state of North Carolina not having an approved budget in place yet.
Move approval of the CR until December 3rd.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve the 2019, 2020 budget CR until December 3rd. Have a second. Okay, any discussion? I guess I would just follow up what he was saying a while ago, we just hope that their funding gets close to what they told us we might get. Don't, we're gonna be in a bind. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have no one signed up for public comments. Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. Several things, I do want to thank Ms. Roach for Educator of the Year for Special Ed. She is a delight to be around, and I'm sure any child would be gracious to be placed in her class, so she's one of those educators that makes a true impact every day in our school buildings. Also, the Bus Garage, for their hard work in working on this inspection audit, it's a much improved number, and it also helps us in our transportation overall ranking, which helps us pull down additional state dollars, instead of taking that money out of local. North Stanley High School, again, great presentation, appreciate that staff pulling things together. They've done a great job this past year. I do meet each quarter with student advisory, I meet with classified advisory and certified advisory, and of course, the goals of that is to keep the board sort of informed with the temperature of our employees, and sort of their thoughts, and some of their concerns, and to work with the board to see what we can do to at least work on those concerns. I will tell you, the students, this past time was probably a little different, I think Hope got to go with me a couple times, and then Vicky several times, to talk to the students. They're very frank, so I have to paraphrase some things, but they're, I will say that cafeteria food definitely got thumbs up this time, we're heading in the right direction. I think Mandy and her department, and I can tell you that this, one day this week, she was elated, because we hit 60% for lunch, which is an all-time high. We're at down around 50, 52%, so again, as we start earning money in cafeteria, we can start drawing back down indirect costs, which then goes into fund balance. So in years, many years past, we were up somewhere near $300,000 to $400,000 a year, that makes a huge difference in fund balance, and as a principal, I was never, no one ever connected the dots. I mean, that's money in fund balance that can go for additional teacher assistance, that can go for stipends, that can go for supplies, so there's a lot of things you can do with that money, so as I inform our principals, child nutrition is an important part of your overall education program, and we want kids to eat, and if any of you read the SNAP article, there was a lady, 38-year veteran, I think out of Mount Pleasant, that wrote an article about children being hungry. I have a Dr. J and the rest of the story article this week, that talks a little bit about the National Food Service Program, and some things we need the community to do. There's a free introduced lunch program, and sometimes I think people just assume they do not qualify, so we struggle to get people to fill out the paperwork. None of us want a child to go hungry, and we all but beg adults to fill these forms out. We'll sit down and help you fill it out, we can't sign it for you, we can't put your income down, but we'll do everything else we can to make sure that every child possible that's eligible for a free introduced lunch gets it, because it's not one of those things, if we don't take the money, it goes back into the bank account. The federal government doesn't do that, as we're all well aware, so if this county doesn't take it, the next county over that does a better job filling out the forms just takes our money, so then our kids miss out. So we're at about 65% free introduced lunch forms, and really, if you look at our demographics, we qualify for 85%, so there's a 20% gap. That ends up being a whole lot of money, and a whole lot of students that could eat. We even do a summer feed program that most people do not understand, and I will give credit to the Housing Authority. Cedric reached out to me last year and had a conversation, and Mandy and her team has done a great job on summer feed sites, to make sure we're taking the food where the need is, and we want to continue to do that. So the food programs are available, and we want to feed children, we just need to get the community to help us somewhat in that behalf. So on that, we never deny a child a meal. I think Monday night, there was a Charlotte Meck story, Channel 9 tried to pull us into that story, but I think they had enough from Charlotte Meck, but Charlotte Meck last year had $391,000 of unpaid lunch debt. We ended the year somewhere between, typically, we in between 20 and 30,000, and unfortunately, some of those people can pay, and they choose not to, so that's the problem we run into. So again, we will not deny a child a meal, so every child eats, so then on the back end... meal. So every child eats. So then on the back end, we have to struggle to find that money, or just like the auditor said, that comes out of local fund balance. So the, the way I see it's pretty simple. We can take the federal government, fill out the paperwork, and take their money. And if we fail to, then we're gonna have to take it out of local taxpayer pockets. Because fund balance comes from our local taxpayers. So anytime we dip into that, it's local taxpayer money, and we're, we're letting the, you know, the feds get off the hook for a program they designed to help feed children. So again, I implore the community to work with us, uh, and get these forms filled out. A great thing that come along, but depending on the feds may change, is SNAP, the CEP schools, and that'll be in the article, Community Eligible Participation. The whole school becomes eligible for it, so nobody pays. If the school has a high enough free and reduced lunch rate, then breakfast and lunch is provided for every child in that school free of charge. Again, if we can get the community to fill out the paperwork, as more schools hit the 62% free and reduced lunch mark, more become eligible for CEP schools. So it's, you know, we just need some help, and, and we can make it happen. So I do implore the community to help us there. So that will help. The other thing that we'll work on with, um, Finance Chair Graves will be the local salary schedule. We have one. It's, it's not been updated, and I will tell you that we're one of four pilots that's doing a modernization project with the state. It's 18 months. The state's putting the money in this. Uh, $800,000 is, is what we sort of foresee in the next 18 months to convert over to a business, uh, modernization system. But as I just told a, a person who managed to put something on Facebook, I, I worked in industry for 22 years. Yes, in, in, in education, we're about 15 or 20 years behind when it comes to business systems. There is no one data source we can go to and find everything we need. We have about 15 different silos, and when you ask the question, it's not as simple as pulling up a program and getting the answer. It requires generating a report. Of most times, it's an Excel spreadsheet that we have to pull from those 15 sources to get an answer. So it's not just simple when you ask the public information request for us to hand you the answer. It doesn't work that way in education. So the modernization, the only thing it's doing is taking our human resources and our finance department and payroll and putting them together in one program. That's gonna cost $800,000 just locally. So you can imagine what it would take to tie in Power School, EVOs, and all this. It would be a perfect world if I could press one button and answer any question. It does not happen. So it does require work. But just remember that, that we are modernizing that. But the local salary schedule is behind. We are working on that. That's something we'll work with the finance committee on. And, uh, once we get that in place, it doesn't require us, what it does is help our classified people who are not on a stipend increase like teachers. Teachers have a stipend, and typically, they get a bump up each year unless there's not a budget. So they have approved the stipend increase. The local salary schedule looks at what we can do locally, because what happens is if I hired Mr. Graves 10 years ago and there's not a bump up each year, or at least several years, then Attorney Louter comes along and applies for a job the same as Grace has, Louter's gonna be making more money because I have to offer more money. So it's not fair to Mr. Graves to be making $2,000 or $3,000 less than a new hire, even though there's a Bible story on that, and you can read it. The, but, so we'll work on that so we don't keep talking about this issue, and it'll take care of itself. But that said, classified, did meet with me, and one of their concerns, and I've heard it loud and clear, this is about the second year. Uh, one of the concerns with classified, again, is what I just said. So what we're looking at is trying to come up with a stipend, like zero to nine years, we'll give you a certain amount. It's hard to do it percentage-wise. All those counties that have done that, when there's been a budget crisis, have had to go back and take money away. So it's easier just to do like a $250 for zero to nine, a 500 for nine to 20, or nine to 19. And then, and we'll look at all those numbers. So once, once we get a budget and we sit down and look, because our fund balance will grow, um, my forecast to my, between my two ears is over $2 million for next year. So I'm, I'm pretty good with numbers. So our fund balance will grow. So we'll have some room there to, to look at our classified people and help give them an offset. So if you're with us 10 years, you're, you're making more money than somebody who just walks in the door tomorrow. And that's the whole idea behind the salary schedule. So we've heard you loud and clear, and, and I know the board's interested in working on that. So we, we will do our best to try to make that happen in the next year. Again, a lot going on. Uh, but again, with the kids, I will say this, and this is a community issue too. Um, and I was sort of taken back by it, but we have a lot of vaping going on, and I think a lot more than what parents understand. Vapes are not cheap, so kids are getting the money from somewhere. Either they're working the job and spending 50 bucks on a vape, or you're giving it to them as a parent, not understanding the detriment vaping is doing. Now, uh, just, there were two deaths just within the last 48 hours where someone had put, uh, fentanyl, two grains the size of a salt grain, fentanyl in a vape, and it killed two different people. So, um, the kids were actually complaining to me that it's going on in their classroom, and they're so good at doing it, the teacher's not catching it. So Beverly and I have had a conversation, and we're actually bringing in a trainer to work with our schools to tell people how to discover vapes, and also to do some training with our kids on, on the vaping, because it's become a crisis in our country. It's got health ramifications. And so that's one of the biggest topics the kids, believe it or not, have brought up. They're concerned about it. Uh, they also brought up some bus discipline, so we're also working on that. Uh, we've got a team that is meeting together to put together some training for our bus drivers. I don't think they've ever had training on how to handle, uh, an unruly kid on their bus. So we're gonna support our bus drivers with some additional trainings. We found some good instructional videos. So a lot of great things come out of these conversations. And actually, our magnet schools wasn't, was, I'll, I'll say it's my brainchild, but it actually, the kids were like, well, we'd like to take this, and we'd, and I'm saying, well, you're, you're talking about magnet schools. So a lot of the stuff that we're doing is not adult setting here coming up with. It's our kids telling us what they want. And again, they remind me, as I try to remind some people in the community, they are our customers. It's their school. It, you know, I, I went to school. I had my time. So again, uh, we're putting together a school system for the kids and our customers that's currently in it. And they seem to be very happy with what we're offering, what we're doing. Uh, when they tell me vaping and, and bus discipline are the only issues, we're doing pretty good. So I thank, thank the board for the support, and the staff has done a wonderful job of putting things together, and, and academics were just phenomenal. Again, we were, we outperformed Union County, which is the end-all, be-all in education in the state of North Carolina. They had 91% schools with C or higher. We had 96. I remind the superintendent when I see him that. But he is presenting at one of the national conferences on the great things they do, and I told him I'd be a good backup, but to brag on what we're doing. So thank you, uh, appreciate all the input, and again, great things going on. So thank you, Chairman Poole.
Ms. Watson, we're gonna let you lead off tonight.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate everything that all of our students are doing, and, um, all these people with the accolades. It's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. And all of our teams have been, um, really doing very, very well and winning very well. So um, thank you all for what you do.
Mr. Chance.
Excuse me, I'm a little clogged up this evening. I hope it's allergies. Today is the one-year anniversary of my double pneumonia demise as of last year. So I'm, I'm praying and, and hoping that this is more allergy-related than anything. If it's not, I'm gonna be terribly disappointed. All right, again, kudos to Ms. Roach. Uh, I've known Ms. Roach for a number of years and her family, and I don't think you can find a better family in Stanley County than, uh, her family and the activities they've been involved in over the years. Her dad was a, an athlete as well in years past. Her mom has worked, uh, in banking. Her sister's an educator. And I know Ms. Roach is, uh, as well personally, and I think she is well-deserving of this accolade. Also want to congratulate North Stanley High School and all of their, uh, achievements and accomplishments. Uh, great to see some things happening there that is positive. Um, also, uh, want to congratulate the Transportation Department and Mr. Lambert and the work they're doing there, and, uh, very impressed with this recent audit that they had by DPI, uh, with the numbers from past years compared to this year. I think it's an excellent, uh, show of improvement. So, um, just really want to say a thank you to all of our educators, all of our administrators, central office staff, everyone who comes to work every day and works, uh, to educate our most precious commodity here in Stanley County, and those are our students, because they honestly indeed are the future of Stanley County, uh, in every way, from political to economic to education and what have you. So congratulations to everyone, and please keep up the good work.
Ms. Gibson.
Well, I'm not gonna go back through things. I echo, um, what Mr. Chance has said. I do want to say, though, that, um, one thing that stood out about the North Stanley High School presentation by Mr. Poplin was, um, that Mr. John Williams, um, what he does and, and taking his students to, um, the Biltmore House because I, I, estate. I think about, um, hopefully, they will be there with the Downton Abbey, um, ex, you know, exhibit, and that will make it even more meaningful. So I would like to go to that myself, but, um, and Ms. Huffman is just amazing at, um, North Stanley High School. I'm so happy about the IB program being in place. Um, I know that that was something that I was very, very interested in when I, when I got on the board. And then in, in just to add to what Dr. James said about our students, they really do tell, you know, what, they, they don't hide things. I mean, you know, that, that advisory board, and they really tell what, what they would like to see in our schools. And I, and I, I truly believe we need to, um, to listen to them. And, and I know that I don't, I don't have a lot of, um, really good things to say right now about our general assembly because of the, the way the budget process, everything has been had, and the way they work together. I told my husband the other night, I said, you know, I believe I could take several of my eighth-grade AIG students that I taught over the years and put them in the general assembly, and I believe they'd get the job done. I truly do. And in fact, these students that were recognized North Stanley High School with the Morehead Scholarship and, and, you know, yeah, they, they could get the job done. So I, I applaud our students, and I applaud our teachers and our principals, um, our central office staff, all that, all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, I would just echo what our three previous members have stated, but I do want to also add one thing. And lastly, just congra, congratulate, um, Dr. James, Ms. Harvey, the entire Finance Department, as well as Mr. Graves, our Finance Chair, on a very good financial audit this year.
Mr. McIntyre, Ms. Crump.
I would just add, uh, one thing. The board got together last week, and we listened to some of the school improvement plans. And I was so, so impressed, uh, listening to the principals who came and talked about, uh, what they're going to be doing, um, when they drill down into the data and look at the weaknesses in some of the schools. Um, I mean, of course, they, they talked about the things that were go, going well, but where they're really focused is on those areas that, um, could be improved. And I was impressed with the fact that the data is so specific. You know, we're becoming so much more sophisticated with the technology that we have. And we have programs now that can link attendance or the lack thereof, um, with grades on end-of-grade, uh, tests and behaviors and all of that in, in one program where, uh, that they can get together, they can advise one another, and they can create plans. And I was very happy to hear, um, Melissa Smith from Central Elementary was talking about the responsiveness that she gets from the central office. She has Dr. James on speed dial. She has other people in the central office on speed dial. She says, I'm texting or calling them in the mornings. We've got our plans together, and if I'm having an issue with a behavioral issue, somebody's down at the school helping me out. I was so impressed with that, that she feels comfortable enough to call the central office and to get the help, and she's getting it, and she was bragging on that. Um, and, and she bragged on many individuals. Um, and I'm sure there are many that she did not, um, even scratch the surface on those who are coming together to help. We have, my particular interest, um, is with those at-risk kids even more so. That's where my tenure is, uh, when I was teaching for five years at the academy. Um, and to know that we now have psych, a psychologist that we're gonna bring on board, we've talked about, um, and behavioral specialist, and that we're really amping up our faculty for, for those types of needs really is comforting because those needs are so, so very great. So, um, kudos to our central office staff.
Ms. Crump, Mr. Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Uh, I also want to, um, add my congratulations along with the, the comments from the previous members to both North Stanley High School. That was an impressive presentation. Uh, actually, I haven't seen a presentation that hasn't been impressive since I've been on the board. Um, it's because there's a lot of good things happening in the county. And it's, uh, but it is great. There, there's a lot of impressive things happening, and we have an impressive staff. Uh, so I wanna, I wanna congratulate them with all the hard work that they're doing and, and the work that was done last year, uh, as well. I also thought that was neat. I did not know about the breakfast. And so that's, uh, that was, I'm glad that we're doing that. And hopefully, uh, some of the other schools, if they're not doing that, they can follow suit as well. I think that would be great. Um, and I think it's great just to have some of the students, particularly, uh, some of the students, um, that maybe don't get out that much, uh, have the experience of meeting some of our veterans, you know, and talking with them and, and hearing some of their stories. It would be, uh, pretty eye-opening for them. Uh, I also want to congratulate the Transportation Department, uh, on what they've been able to accomplish in their audit. Two great audits in one night, so that's fantastic. Um, I did want to just close with a quick comment because, and this piggybacks on what I was saying about the presentation from, from North Stanley High School. Uh, if there's one thing that I could say over the last year, it hasn't been quite a year since I've been on the board, uh, but leadership, well, I would say experience is important, and I think it is, um, really obvious what can happen when you have somebody in a leadership role, uh, in any organization that has experience. And we're very fortunate, I would say, the best decision that this board, myself not included, I wasn't on here when this decision was made, but the best decision that this board made, uh, was hiring, uh, Dr. Jeff James, because there were a lot of qualified applicants, but they picked the right one. Um, and so I think that their, their faith and trust that they placed in the superintendent was well-placed. Uh, and I was gonna say leadership is critical, and I think that's the extra added element that Dr. James brings to the mix, because he gets out there, he talks with the staff, he talks with the students. The students, every time he talks about going out and talking to the student advisory boards and things, the students are only open with you if they believe you're actually listening to them and you're gonna do something about it. And last year, I remember his very first experience when he reported it to the board. I was sitting out there, uh, when he was talking about it, and some of the comments that were coming in from students, this, the comments that I recall were, uh, sort of skeptical, right? Here are complaints, let's see what you're gonna do about it. And I think now, they're eager to share with them because they know that the administration will listen, and they'll actually do everything they can to, to address those issues. That is a huge compliment. So I, um, I'm optimistic, and I would say the one thing is, up until, I would say a couple of months ago, every single time I would go out, I would usually run into someone that worked for the school system, and there was a, there, there was optimism, but there was also some hesitancy as well, and there were some frustrations. I would say over the last couple of months, that has completely changed. Every single teacher I've run into, every staff member I've run into, they are optimistic. Um, they're not worried about the central office. They're not worried about the school board. The only concerns they have are concerns that have to be addressed. Going back to what, uh, Ms. Gibson said, and what the superintendent said, they have to be addressed at the state level. And so I, I just want to thank the board for doing such a great job. I want to thank the superintendent for doing everything that he's done and his staff and his administration. Because that's the other thing, too. There've been staffing changes, and I think all those changes have worked out very well. Um, because it's easy to say, we're making this change, and things are gonna be great. It's another thing to make the changes and then have things turn out great. So I think that's what's happened. Anyway, um, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Um, I'd just like to make one- I'd just like to make one comment about vaping. This didn't go on when I was young, but I think I would have had enough sense not to take it up. If I hadn't, my dad would have applied some knowledge to my backside and I wouldn't have taken it up. But I would say to the young people out there, you know, everything that adults do is not smart. And just because they're, want to walk around like a furnace with smoke coming out of their mouth, doesn't mean that you have to do that. I just encourage you to think about your health because from what we're seeing end up in hospitals now, it's not just affecting the person that's doing it, it, you affect your family when you get yourself in critical medical condition. So just think long and hard on it, it's not something that you can't live without, I promise you. Ms. Crump and Mr. Graves and Dr. James and I think Ms. Calvert were in Asheville at a law conference since last meeting and we sort of had an intensive primer on board interactions with the, with the superintendent and with the public and what have you. And I, I'm sharing this because sometimes I think members in the public will complain to a certain board member and because something doesn't get fixed like pop ASAP, they're ready to hang that board member out on a limb. It's, it's vital to understand that the board acts as a body and our decisions as a body. We individually don't have any authority. And so before you expect your certain board member to deliver all manners of things to you, it just ain't going to happen that way. So understand that upfront and I think it'll make your relationships with board members go a lot better. I, I think too, this board has maybe stepped back and not tried to micromanage quite so much for the last year or so and I think we've seen some good results come out of that. I think for the, for the vast majority of the people we have in the system, they want to do a good job and they're concerned about doing a good job for the students and I think sometimes we've sort of getting back out of the way can produce good results. But I want to say to all of the board members, you've, this, this year's flown by rather rapidly and you've had to, we've, we, I'll say we because we're all involved in it, we've had to deal with some issues that weren't necessarily palatable, weren't agreeable to all of us on every situation, but we've worked through it and we're still sitting here as a board and we're not throwing rocks at one another. And I think that's, that's, you can all pat yourselves on the back and be commended for that. You've been a good board to work with this year and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. That being said, next board meeting will be here December the 3rd at 7:00 PM and that will be our reorganization meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters under the appropriate North Carolina general statute and student matters under the appropriate North Carolina general statute and attorney-client privileges, I'm sorry, attorney, attorney-client matters under the appropriate North Carolina statute.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session, we have a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we'll take about a six or seven-minute recess en route. Thank you for being so patient. Call the, the chair calls the open session back to order. Does anyone have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the maintenance salary schedule step increase.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve the step increase schedule for the maintenance department. Do we have a second? Second from two directions. All those in favor. Hope can take you. Actually, just as a point of clarification, you don't have to list who does a second on any motion. You don't, you don't, so, but you do have to have a second to vote, but you don't have to list it in the minutes. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying, or any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, Mr. McIntyre, we have a second. Yes, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.